Right there.
Morning.
Morning.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves for the record.
My name is Matt McCowen. I am a senior, uh, senior conflict public defender for the, uh, Bannock County. This is my assistant and brains of the operation, Katie Borassa.
Welcome. Okay. Tell us about your report.
We, uh, this is the first time I've ever done this, sir, and, uh, it took about, I would say total between the two of us, about two hours of time, just taking the data we have and how we track our cases and turning it into the online form that the Public Defense Commission uses. And we were able to get that done on Thursday. And I got an email confirmation from Jared Ricks, who is the Eastern Region Commissioner, who said, "All looks good." But my understanding is I have a statutory obligation to tell you that. So therefore, it all looks good.
That's what we love to hear. Like I told the attorney last week, usually we get the notice from the state saying, "This data hasn't been submitted." Would you please talk to your attorney?
I talked, I even forwarded the email to Christie like a good doobie. And, uh, the one thought I had, Braden said I could spend up to 10 seconds on this, is that this is, I think, among their inaugural efforts at this endeavor. And in the future, the format in which they want the information is not how most lawyers keep track of their cases. So we, rather than whine about that, we've, we volunteered to help them work on their forms such that not just us, not just Bannock County, but all of us across the state can make these forms work in a way that's actually more meaningful for the decision-makers such as yourselves.
Good, good. No, we're excited and I'm grateful that within Bannock County, our office has jumped right after and been willing to support, help, and improve.
Yeah, because they want, they just want raw numbers. And as you both know, that doesn't tell the story of how much time a given case takes, right? You could say, "Oh, I have eight misdemeanors." And as Brian will tell you, that means almost nothing. It means one could take a week, or one can take five minutes. And it's not, is it fair to say it's of limited value?
That's fair.
Thank you. I'm happy to entertain questions.
Comments, questions?
No.
Other than what did you learn from that? Was there anything that, any parts of the data that stood out to you as interesting?
I was pleased to see, this is gonna, I don't, if this sounds lighthearted, it's not meant to be. I was pleased to see that we don't have any capital cases that are, at least in my office. I don't know if that's true of the public defender's office generally. That's a really good thing for Bannock County. I don't, I mean, if I was doing this in Florida, we'd have a bunch, and that's no fun. Um, we have far more misdemeanors than felonies, which is also a good thing. I mean, it's not a great thing, but it's a good thing. And, um, I felt, I think it's still a work in progress, to be honest with you both, about what the PDC is trying to figure out with the, the data it's collecting. So it'll be interesting to see what they do with 44 counties' worth of this information. Cause I have no idea what I would do with it, other than say, "Well, this, we had this many cases based on CP, juvenile misdemeanor felony, capital misdemeanor, capital felonies." And those are just raw numbers. How that translates into attorney time, it really doesn't. And I think that was, my understanding, you tell me, I think that was meant to be the point. But they're not there yet. Is that fair enough?
Well, that's, that's a-
Thoughts?
That's a division that's in turmoil right now in the state. We don't know what direction it's gonna go, or where it's gonna end up, whether it's gonna be a regional, whether it's gonna be the state and stuff, and so.
My, my understanding is they're looking for any good ideas, any help they can to have what they're doing be more beneficial for people in your positions. And, and for what it's worth, like I said, I don't whine. I, I step up and say, "Can we help you do this better in the future?" And so we are going to do that.
Thank you. You been with us month, month and a half, or whatever?
I think two months.
Two months now?
Five years, it feels like.
How is it?
Yes, five years. So far, so good. Lot of information at once, but catch on pretty quickly, so.
Uh, she's very self-effacing. She has never worked in a legal environment before, and she is adapting to it like a salmon upstream. It's amazing. Absolutely amazing.
Good job. Good. But let's don't compare her to salmon. You know what happens to salmon once they get upstream.
That's why.
You wanna keep her out.
I was harking back to the very first day of my employment for the state of Idaho. They said, "What do you know about anatremus fish?" And I said, "I didn't even know that there was a word called anatremus. Other than that, I'm ready to go."
Well, thank you. We appreciate your office. We appreciate all that's going on.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks. All right. Scott.
Hi, good morning. I'm Scott Crowther, Event Manager, Business Director. Um, I've got a couple things to chat about today. We'll kinda, we'll start with Pocatello, Chubbie Chamber of Commerce. Matt, you wanna come up?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Uh, before you, we have a contract for the Chamber of Commerce to use, uh, the facility for law enforcement appreciation barbecue. Uh, they do this every year. They're not asking for a fee waiver, but they do like to bring in a life flight in my helicopter, and that's kind of, uh, just something we'd like to get your, your approval to do.
Same rules as, as always. Safety's number one.
Yeah.
Make sure that they don't have to pick somebody up when they land.
And we've had years where, you know, if the wind is bad or what, that they don't land. Or if they get called out on emergency, they just don't come. So, but every time they have landed, it's been all good. So, keep that way into the future. There's a lot of space around that area for them to land. So, it works out very well.
Well, we've had other people that have thought they could just come land. Didn't matter if there was a crowd there or not. So, oh, we appreciate you coming in.
Yes, I have no issue with that. So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request by the Chamber of Commerce.
We have motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Love to invite you guys to come out to that when we're doing it next year. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right. Nicole?
Hello.
Hello. Hello.
Would you mind just introducing yourself for the records?
Of course. I am Nicole Farley, and I work for Heritage Home Health and Hospice. And this is our VP of Marketing, Demi Hadley.
Demi Young.
Demi Hadley Young.
Uh, these folks are asking, are requesting a permission to use the walking path, and then to use the multi-use field for an event in July. Do you guys wanna just describe the event and tell what your intent is?
Yes. Our intent is to raise money for the seniors. Heritage wants to make this event an annual event. And all proceeds, we would like to go toward either like the senior center, the free clinic, Mills on Wheels. Uh, we just feel like the seniors do so much, or have done so much in our community. And where we're kinda in the business of taking care of, I mean, all patients, but a lot of seniors, we wanna, we wanna give back to them and to the areas that they can benefit that from. Um, what I'd like to do is, like I said, start an annual walk, have our, um, area assisted living facilities come and participate, set up booths so seniors have information on those. And those who participate have information on those facilities that they may be putting their loved ones in. And, um, just kinda have an awareness of what's out there for the seniors. Just do a little walk with them, have a pavilion set up with refreshments. And, um, we're thinking about maybe having a food truck there for after the walk if anyone's hungry. And so we would like to actually kinda partner with the Portnife Wellness Complex, use their logo on all of our, our advertising. We wanna get banners, flyers, and have them donate that space. We chose the walking path because it's, it's in a safe location, don't have to worry about getting the streets kinda shut off, or having police force or anyone out there blocking roads. And with our seniors, that's an easy path. There's places to stop, there's places to cut off. So if we have some of our seniors out there walking along with the community, I just feel like it's a safe place.
Comments, questions?
No, I'm okay with it.
The only thing I would say is, I would like you to use the Bannock County seal rather than Portnife Wellness.
Okay.
Be, because Portnife, that, that insinuates that Portnife Health Trust, to me, is, is the ones that involved. It is, and it's, they don't longer have anything to do with that. I know it is the Wellness Center, the Portnife Wellness Center, but it's Bannock County, and that's who's donating, not.
Can I get those logos from you guys?
Emma. Get her, get her in contact with Emma. And Emma's the one that releases the rights for that.
And we're thinking about just, I put the date, January, or July 17th, hoping that would work out. I'm thinking football and all that hasn't quite started yet, and we're, it's in the morning. Kinda start at eight with setup and late registration, do the walk and have it all cleaned up and everything by one. I would say the one closer to probably the volleyball, the restroom. The ones that are closest to the restroom. Yeah.
So that would be, that would be the fee that would need to be waived, if, if that's the way we go, which would be up to $100,000.
What's it, what's it cost us to all the garbage out of something like that? Or can we make it so that, or help them so they can do it?
Uh, we, I would just say we would just do it. I mean, we've got our folks, especially during the summertime, we hit the garbage a couple times a day. So, I, I, it's hard to say, cause we haven't done it yet, to know what the impact would be, how many people would show up.
Okay. So, in the future, that would be my big concern is making the garbage. And if, otherwise, I'm okay with waiving the fee for that.
Okay.
But if, if it is a big burden on us garbage-wise, then we'll make an adjustment in the future.
And again, I'm, I'm sure we have plenty of staff there to help out.
And we're gonna run it through the not-for-profit side that Heritage has. It's called ELF, the ELF Foundation, enriching lives and, enriching lives and families. And so that's how we'll be able to make the donations, is through the not-for-profit side that Heritage has.
Okay. And I appreciate you offering to use our logo and stuff on there. That's, that's kinda the big deal to us. So, that makes it easier to waive the fees if we're gonna do that. So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the fee waiver for the walk for seniors as presented.
Have motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And would you like me to run marketing material by anyone specific?
Just work through Annie, and then we can move it to Ellen.
Perfect. Thank you guys for your time. Appreciate you.
Good luck.
As you recall, a couple of, I don't know, maybe a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we, we met and we talked about submitting a bid essentially for this Mosky Horse Equestrian Event.
Right, right.
Be held up at our, at our facility. And they have selected us to be the host. And this is the contract for.
Fantastic. That's exciting.
Yeah, it's very exciting. Um, and we're, we're really looking forward to it. Um, it was a tie. Our president had to be the tiebreaker between Rock Springs and, and Pocatello, so.
So how did he break the tie? Pay the rock scissors?
The president had to make the call.
He just had to?
Yeah. Kansas voted for Rock Springs, cause it was closer to them, but Idaho and Washington weren't here. And so, it was pretty good. And I don't know, um, if Bannock County would be interested in presenting a bid or, or putting in one. Blackfoot had done it for every other year for four years, a contract. And I don't know if it would be something that you guys would be interested in.
Are you doing a multi-year contract?
Mm-hmm. We meet on, um, the 11th and 12th of November. Usually we do our bids in July, though, when we have our event. But, um, but that's something for an option for, you know, a set, a set price for those four year, well, I guess it'd be eight years, but.
Well, I'll just tell you that once you come to us this year, you're gonna want us to come back. Plain and simple.
That's what I, I was trying to explain to him. They're kinda really concerned about the, um, the horse race being there and the traffic. And I tried to explain to him, they won't even notice it. It's totally separate, other than not being able to access the track. But they'll be able to see that when they come to the meeting on, on the 11th and 12th.
Not fine.
I'm, I'm excited. Anytime we can have a national level event here. And, uh, if we can do it multiple years, we'll see what we can do to make that happen. I think that's fantastic. So.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I authorize signature on the contract for the event as presented, the National Saddle Club.
Have motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Well, and hopefully we see all of you there.
Let us know.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
That's exciting.
Yeah. Tom?
Welcome. Morning, guys. How are you?
Good. How are ya?
Well, I'm all right.
You're getting around, so that's all right.
I'm getting around barely, but yeah.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Tom Barnes. I live in Laban now. I sold my place in Downey. I'm on the Eastern Idaho State Fair Board is why I'm here on the agenda today for reappointment.
How long have you served there, Tom?
Since, uh, 98. Been on there about 20, 24 years.
So you know what you're doing?
Well, I hope so.
You're serving, are you chair this year?
No, I'm, I'm just chair, I'm off. Corey Foster's their chair now.
Okay.
I was on for four years, and we kinda rotate through that.
And you're willing to suffer through another four years?
Yeah. Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's, it's fun. You gotta enjoy it. And I wanna tell you right now that we are nominated for, in the top five of the small market rodeos again this year.
Good.
I think we'll probably, if we win that, then we're doing something right.
Yeah.
We've got some projects that we're gonna, I wanna see through, and we're gonna start so that you guys can see that we're moving ahead, I hope.
So, share with us a little bit about any concerns you have, or, or the achievements.
Not really too many concerns. I mean, there's, there's a few. I mean, just the old bleachers we've got, you know, they've been after it. I don't know how we'll ever afford to build new ones. You know, the last time we had that big, about 22 million. And now it's probably 40 million, you know, to do that. But we're gonna try, we wanna try to get rid of the, uh, all of the beef, the old beef barns and out on the far side, on the north side of the grounds, and put in a whole, a big, a big welding, bigger than the Goddard building, is what we're trying. Uh, we've got enough money, I think, to pay half of it. And then we'll probably have to, you know, take a small one. That's, that's our big one. And Dennis Marshall, he's from Bonneville County, he's starting to work on that. We're putting a lot of, uh, he's putting the resources together to see if we can get some funding from some bigger companies, you know, some in kind. And that's, that's our big, mine and his big project right now. Trying to keep the agricultural part of it going is tough. Uh, you know, dairy shows used to, we used to have big ones, and now we have to pay somebody to bring in dairy cattle. Uh, beef was up this year a little bit. That, it's just hard, hard to keep agriculture in these, you know, the big companies with dairies and, just, it's tough.
Well, we face that same thing here in the county.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you know how the buildings are down in Downey?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, haven't had any money put in them for, for a long time.
They've been the same way that when I started down there.
4H.
4H, 50 some odd years ago, so, yeah. It's tough.
It's a big concern.
We have, we have made some good strides up there. There's some things we've done that, you know, well, you've seen our financials, and that's where we're sitting, fair.
And that's what we appreciate as the counties. I mean, our fees are the same, have been for four years that I've been here. And, uh, and we appreciate that. I mean, cause just like your budget, if you're able to, you're able to make some money and, and those that come to play, pay, we like that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's the thing, you know, when we appreciate what the counties do for us, you know, the, the help we get, and the, the monies we get from them. And it, it's a struggle to, we're the only, only state fair really in Idaho. You realize that? And we're 16 counties, but we are the only really state fair. Ada County acts out, boy, see, that's Ada. You know, that's by, and, and Coeur d'Alene, Northern Idaho, but it's not a state fair. And we get no funding from the state whatsoever. It all has to be made through the gate.
Yeah.
Entertainment. And we, we had a good year this year, too, even.
Yep. Well, we appreciate you representing Bannock County. Uh, you've done a great job. And you've had concerns, or we've had concerns, been easy to get a phone call and have a conversation.
You bet. And I, you know, that's why I'm here, to serve you guys and do my job.
So we'll be receiving a, a notice, right?
Yes.
And then we'll, we'll have a meeting where we submit your name and-
Yeah, yeah. You'll be getting that, I think you send it out on the 7th this month. And then we give you a timeline, there's a timeline to get it back.
Anything else?
Don't think so.
All right.
Appreciating you guys for your support.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like Hal was next. I don't see Hal.
I'm taking his place right here. Elise Foster, Planning and Development. I have a plat for Mountain View Estates. It's 49 lots, located on the corner of Reservation and Philbin. Um, the open spaces within the lots. Um, they did bond for mailboxes about a month and a half ago. That is still in progress.
Okay.
We're just looking to sign the plat today.
Okay. Jason's not around?
Can I see if he's in his office?
I can. I can take it down. Does he need to sign it in the meeting, Jason?
No.
We just have to have him sign it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve and authorize signature on the plat map as presented through.
Have motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 This one might go over, so I do.
Elise, are you good tracking again?
I can, yes.
If not, Carrie will be down there.
Okay.
My biggest fear is to sign this in the wrong place.
That's it.
Not true.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Looks like probation.
Good morning.
Good morning. Introduce yourselves.
Uh, Evy McCurry with Bannock County, probation and pre-trial.
Doug Cohen, Chief Prostration Sir.
Okay, so, um, we have these pretty little packets, if you want a copy of them. Sure. They made them, might as well. Um, our fax machine died. And, um, we have a couple different options that I've looked into. We met with Allied, and we can either continue our lease at about the same price that we are budgeted for, which is, um, roughly around $121 a month. And that would include the service plan and toner. Or we have the option to purchase. Um, the price difference in purchasing is the lease over the total of the 62 months would be $7,623. Um, and then the purchase price of $4,900. If we did go with purchasing, it would be obviously, um, cheaper than the lease amount, and we would still then have to pay for a maintenance plan and toner, um, that would be separate, which would come to about $28 a month, somewhere around there. So, um, we could just, we could do that. But I just wanted to bring those two options, um, that we do have in front of you. Of course, with our budget, $4,900 purchasing it would probably deplete a good chunk of it. So, um, but we, we are budgeted as well for, um, to continue a lease should we decide to do that. It's just the total cost is almost double.
So, Evy got ahold of me, and we ran through some of the numbers. Um, it does look like purchasing, it could be cheaper in the long run. Um, where she does not really have $4,900, I mean, you'll have about $1,000 extra if all she's paying is the $28 a month.
Mm-hmm.
So there's really two options. She could pay for it. And then if she gets in trouble at the end of the year, come before the board and use contingency at the end of the year. Or I did the new pill funds application, and we should be getting those monies within the next week or so. So we could use $4,900 of that to make this purchase.
And we're not gonna start doing that. We're not gonna divvy into that, little bits here and there. We're gonna have projects on that.
Okay. That's fine. I just, where this was a last minute thing.
Has Adam been talked to at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, once, once that, um, fax machine, of course, it was the one that we owned that died, not the one that we were leasing. Um, and so, we called him to see if, on the one we are leasing currently, if we could have fax, just plug that one in, cause we had two. Well, he came over, and with as old as that machine is, he could not put the software that it required in order to have it faxed. So it just solely copies right now. Um, and so, he said, "You know, I don't see any other way, other than you're just gonna have to get a new machine to be able to get into this line." So, I think that one was too old to even upgrade.
Are you faxing to the courts? Is that why you have to fax?
We fax primarily with, um, treatment providers, health and welfare. Um, the courts, no, not so much. The jail, quite a bit with agents warrants.
So why can't we switch to, why can't we switch to email for?
Well, we had talked to him about that. HIPAA compliance was an issue with, um, health and welfare. And then with like psyche valves and treatment, they won't send those via email. So it was a HIPAA. And that's majority of our faxing is through treatment providers. Cause we looked at wanting to do maybe like an email to fax line. And so we talked to him about those options. We would have, have to purchase like a year-
Right.
-thing for that. But, um, in talking with some of the treatment providers and, and the people that we are faxing with, it came to my attention that apparently they don't like to do that, because that can be hacked into where a fax line is a little older and doesn't, I guess. I don't know much about the technology, but.
Are they legally, but they're not legally required to fax?
No.
That's just a preference they have.
I think-
Cause they could email. Cause I've gotten those types of reports via email.
I don't know. That's what I was told as far as sending over like psyche valves, help CPS.
I chuckle at the fax thing being more secure.
I know.
Cause it lays on the fax, and anybody could come pick it up, so.
It's kind of an old school thing.
We get NICS, the National Investment-
That's another big one.
We get those all the time on people on probation, and they fax those to us. We have to do, see if they purchase a bar or not.
And they said that they would not email the NCIS, but-
We only have 48 hours to answer them back, or else they just give them the weapon. So if someone on probation, and we don't answer them, they just give them back.
Those, we did reach out to see if they would email, and they said they would not email those. So maybe with NCIS is different. I don't know.
Veteran Services read to that issue as well.
Do they?
Melissa was in earlier, talking about the same thing. So.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to take the gamble, but go ahead and buy it, and see where we're at, you know, as the year progresses and goes.
No, they do only have a 22, $690 operating budget. So, this'll be about a full of it. Hopefully, it might be in touch.
Well, that's another discussion.
Okay.
Who put this together?
Um, Allied.
It's illegal for them to use our seal.
Oh, didn't know. I'll tell them.
Tell them, it's a, what's the cost of this? What's a fine?
That'll cover my fax machine, or? A fine of forty-nine hundred dollars a fax machine.
I'm just saying, we got four or five pages here that have our seal on it.
In their defense, as a salesman, I would've done the same thing.
I think they wanted it to look pretty, I'm sure.
I would've done the same thing, so. Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I authorize purchase of the fax machine as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Percy, so with that, can I just contact you on how to do that, through what line item?
Do you, are you guys gonna sign this today, or does it need to come back?
I don't have anything to, I don't have anything to sign.
I will give it to you. So this is-
But it's gotta go through legal.
Okay.
Okay, so sign Tuesday.
Sign, sign it on Tuesday.
Tuesday's easy.
Okay.
Something that we've never looked at. I do not like signing at the heat of the moment.
Have a good day.
Hey, thanks, guys. All right, Nancy.
So, this is just a pass-through grant from the federal government through the Idaho Office of Emergency Department of Homeland Security for the Wes Joneses' funds to enhance his emergency management.
And this is a repeat grant? This is not the first time?
Correct, this is a repeat, repeat grant.
Okay, and I read through that a little bit last night. Do you know what activities he's specifically tying to this?
I don't know what he has planned for this year.
Okay. I'll go out and talk to him about it.
Yes.
When I was reading through it last night, I didn't see anything specifically identified, so I was just kinda curious. Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we authorize signature for the grant as presented.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that being said, we'll be at recess till one thirty.